December, July, twenty twenty five at seven P M. There's no fire alarms when you light that flame, so one will just go off. If you're back at the premises via the entrance at the front, we can in all through the entrance behind us, please. Firstly, I'd like to do is welcome the new ca- three new councillors that we've taken on since the election last week. Councillor Adams, Councillor Littlebrook and Councillor Allen. Item two, apologies for absence. Item three, declarations of interest. Anybody continuing interested in the council? So may I?
Yeah, I did a regular, um, campaign from council, um, for the job officer. Um. Shall I, do you want me to leave for that? What from, um, the payment to the council? Or just give a question or just?
I'll go the same on that then, please, and also on item fifteen, Breckland cop art proposal. And as Breckland are asking us to team up with them for the safer street warding scheme, are you wanting a declaration on that as well? It'd be a partnership between Breckland and the town council, but on the way there is a financial contribution.
Yeah, I would say so.
Okay, so then for those three items, please.
All right, moving on to item number three, uh, sorry, item number four, public participation. Uh, following last month's meeting, I'm, I'm gonna have to be rather strict on the ten minute rule. And, uh, so, and each individual is limited to three minutes. Can I ask if anybody wants to speak on any of the agenda items? No? Okay, we'll take priority for the agenda, please. So, Lady O'Malley?
I would believe in the, in the items.
Okay, sorry, let's move outside then, I can't, what's it? Just wait.
I'll stand up. Last month, I stood down in this council on, uh, personal grounds of integrity. Someone around this table leaked confidential information. And then with the challenge, someone around this table lied to all of you and didn't step down. So we know that they're breaking the noble principle. So my question is, what are you doing about it, starters? And B, you are aware that as councillor, you can also be held responsible for breaking the noble principles as a body. So it's very simple. That one person has destroyed the trust that I had in this council. And it doesn't take a genius to figure out who it could be, the prime minister. But what are you doing about it, please? It's really important.
Not sure what we can do to cover this, but, um, other than asking personal questions, in, uh, anybody got any ideas? Suspend the, uh, timeline. Any thoughts? Any thoughts, huh? Councillor Taylor?
So to uphold principles of leadership, the town council, if they believed one of their members had broken the law in principles, could make a standard complaint about that member as a body to the authority, which would be Breckland council, to review and consider that complaint. I think we would have a very difficult time while we could speculate as to who that person is actually proving it. And I think that's where we feel short.
Okay, anybody else have anything to add? Anybody else want to comment? Yes, please.
Can you answer my question now?
Sorry?
Can you answer my question now?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay, my question is for councillor Allen. Um, first of all, I want to know that during the hustings, that while you vilified a, um, long standing member of our community, Bit Block, I guess most people would know him, while you bullied him and called him out at the hustings, um, for a period of some ten minutes. Um, and also the other question is that you, you came in on a ticket of going to overthrow the current council, um, and you said quite good cheer about that. And also that you said that you would get out the, um, standing members of the council, which was a certain family, as you put it, that everyone seemed to know who you were talking about. And also a, a member of the council that had broken the law. So in the interest of openness and honesty, I'd like to know why you vilified Bit Block in the way that you did, because it was a terrible performance. And also that I would like in, in the rest of openness and honesty, which is also something else that you said, I would like to know why you want to overthrow the current council? And how you intend to do that. I assume that when you got up and spoke, that you actually had a plan.
This is councillor Allen?
Yeah.
Um, first of all, your remarks to, um, Bit Block at the hustings, um, I was just merely demonstrating what we as councillors can and can't actually do. And this candidate wanted to build a swimming pool. I don't know where the funding is gonna come from to do that. You can't promise things that you can't deliver. So all I was doing at this point is demonstrating what we actually have power to do, and that was not one of them. Um, with your comments on my remarks and other councillors, we're here to scrutinise each other. If I do something wrong, I want every councillor here to take me up on that, challenge me. I think we should all be here to scrutinise each other. That's all I have to say on the matter.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, please? Councillor, uh, which one's there? Hes, councillor, right.
Proceed with your question. I think many years ago, I was chatting in front of the chair, rather than chair, mayor, uh, when I was asking questions, as to whether I was registered voters or being awarded a award. Much to his, um, upsetness, I was. The reason why I want to check this is because I understand that if you're not a registered voter, you don't necessarily have a right to ask questions or vote for the council. Is that right?
Probably thought so, yeah, I'm not su- not entirely sure, but I'll have to go and check that.
Yeah, just thought to contemplate.
Councillor, councillor Allen?
You can't on the annual assembly, if you're not the resident of Attleborough, no, you can't ask questions. But I haven't heard it on a normal meeting, that the annual assembly, no, you have to be registered on voting list to ask questions.
That's my understanding, that's my. We'll go and check that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yes, please.
Um, I think your clerk is right. I think you, if you're a, you can be representing, um, a member of the community, but the meetings are open to all, but that's not my question. I just want to clarify, I know I brought this up last month, but it wasn't included in the minutes. Can you please clarify what the chambers is? Because there seems some confusion, whether it's a town council initiative or an external group. And if it's a town coun- town council initiative, fine, but it needs to be made clear, because obviously you're processing all their paperwork and invoices. If it's not a town council initiative, then why are you processing all their paperwork, et cetera? So it just needs clarification, so people understand, is it a town council initiative or is it not?
I, I look upon it as a collaborative, collaborative.
Between who?
Between the town council and Breckland, because Breckland have funded it, as it had funded the equipment. Um, it, it's, it's, it, it's an initiative that, um, is meant to be not a burden on the council tax. So when it gets, if it ever got to the point where it was, we'd have to have another conversation. But at the moment, it's in surplus, so it's actually a fundraising exercise.
So you, so what you're saying, it's a collaboration between you and Breckland, it's not an external group, it's between you and Breckland who are facilitating it, sorting the funding out and doing the paperwork. So it's, it is your little, but your baby with Breckland at the moment.
Kind, yeah, more or less, but it's housed here, I think I said that before, hasn't I? It's housed here and we're using kitchen and we're using the town hall's electricity, but for a good cause.
Yeah, I don't, I, I think it is a good cause. I mean, I just want, I think it needs clarifying. If it's your initiative, great. I don't understand why you've stopped promoting it on your town council website. That's what raised the question, because you used to promote it, but you've, you haven't been promoting it. Yeah, and that's what ma- made me ask the question. Well, is it a separate thing? And it's not on Breckland's website, so, you, you know, so, but you're saying it's a Breckland and town council collaborative initiative, um, to facilitate, and at the moment, you are facilitating by doing the paperwork and providing the venue and the electricity and that sort of stuff. Yeah, okay.
Anybody else? Yes, please.
Um, good evening. Uh, Peter here. I'll ask the same question as I asked, asked at the June meeting. Where is the gallery of the photographs of the former mayor's period back on the wall?
It must have been, was that?
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, it's just, we're, we're down.
But they are going back.
They are definitely going back.
You said that last time.
Yeah. Now, we're, we're, we're a bit short on staff at the moment, so, uh,
But they will be up.
They will be up.
I look forward to the August meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, please.
I don't have a question, I just want to say how nice Queen Square looks with all the hollyhocks and everything. That's it.
Anybody else? Uh, okay, we'll move on then, thank you very much. Item five, minutes of the last meeting, held second of June twenty twenty five, for acceptance and approval. Would you get any comments? Yes, please.
Thank you. Um, I've, there's been a few concerns raised, the balance is spread, it is of the minutes from the last meeting. The minutes show no true affection from the last meeting at all. There was a lot more issues and concerns raised and spoken about that I'm conflicted regarding the public participation. Uh, there is no full detailed questions and answers section, it's very brief.
Yes.
Um, also there is another, the minutes show lack of discussion and lack of debate.
Yes.
So, but I won't, I won't agree.
There is enough to that.
I don't.
There is enough to that. Um, that, that, that's quite a stock phrase in the twelfth world, that they're minutes, not hours. So, um, with, with public participation, you don't have to do it verbatim, you don't have to answer or record verbatim. What the minutes are there for really is in the main is to record, give a flavour of the discussion. We don't even have to do that. It's really there to record the decisions of the council.
Councillor Taylor?
I'd like to have personal acceptance as a majority.
Can we use a second? Councillor Dalton. Words in favour, please? Okay.
It's ringing.
Can I just count yours? Hands up, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven, four.
Two against, whether you vote against or you, uh, say. That's very good, actually. So obviously you're getting ready to. Okay, moving on to item six, to appoint fifth member of the personal committee. Anybody interested?
May I propose a counteraction?
Okay, anybody else?
I would propose myself.
Second, then?
My second, yes.
Anybody else? Yeah, straight ahead. Words? Okay, votes for councillor Burton, then, please.
You can vote yourself. You can, Daniel, you can vote for yourself.
Councillor, votes for councillor Dalton?
One, two, three, four, five.
Okay. Councillor Burton, you're up, isn't he? Okay, moving on to item seven, financial matters. But one to authorize payments. Any comment on? Any comments?
I was gonna put on a special one, I'll ask this particular question now, but one thing I've noticed is, uh, so, um, on the direct debits, we have.
Can I give us a direct debit, if we can, if we can? Okay, that's fine.
Just quickly, overall, I can't sense a change of the, having you upload the files. I can't, I can't access the finances that went up on the phone, is it up in a zip file? Which is both yet to open, so I haven't actually been able to see any of the financials. So I won't be able to focus, which I haven't seen them. So, there's a format that I haven't received yet.
What I'll do is, I will, I'll put them into the future on next one, so that you can see them on the zip file.
Let's do that, because I just want to answer this. Thank you.
I have the same, I have the same.
Yeah.
Uh, can I propose it for the, can I propose it for the, uh, item one, the payment? Councillor Reynolds, Councillor Dalton, second. Words in favour? Uh, two to agree direct debits.
I, I, I can say the words, stay on this side.
Yeah, I didn't feel exactly, I haven't seen them.
Okay.
Thank you. Can't quite, I don't think I haven't seen them.
And shall I have?
And I'm not, I'm not, I mean.
I've saved as well. Ah, awesome, man, that's eight extensions above, because I've got intentions, it's still.
Item two, to agree direct debits.
Yes, sir. Yeah. Sorry, the question I was gonna ask is, uh, I noticed on your, on the direct debits, we use two companies for mobile phones. That's Vodafone and BT. I just wondered if there was any logic in that. Would it not have been better to stick with one company?
Yeah, unfortunately, we're in a contract and I can't tell you how long each one is, but the Vodafone is for myself and the assistant clerk. And the other one is for the Grandstar.
Right.
So that's historical and because we're caught in a contract, I can't really do much about that. Yeah.
Can I propose it, please? Councillor Dalton, second, then? Councillor Weller, words in favour? Councillor Dalton, then?
Majority, yeah, um, okay. Any extensions?
Any extensions?
Yeah, one.
What does this say in the document?
Two.
Okay, item three, to receive income. Any comments or questions? Can I propose it, please? Councillor Reynolds, second, then? Councillor Pousa, words in favour?
Majority. Any exceptions? Give a quick hand up, please. Yeah, one, two, three.
Betty Cass, we haven't got this week, this time because of, uh, performance of staff in short notice, but, uh, then, item five, incoming expenditure for June twenty twenty five, confirmation. Anybody got any questions?
Just got a question from a member of the public on the, I think it was expenditure. Um, I'm not releasing on the dustpan brush, it was twenty three pounds. I'll be looking it up, and I think for three big people, I just wonder why.
That was multiple dustpan brushes, I don't know, I'm not too good at that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Because we've been, um, trying to, you know, sort of like, uh, refurbish the, um, the arch and also the Vodafone, it could be related to that or it could be replaced.
That's why I was.
Yeah, on, on this expenditure, we seem to purchase a lot of stuff from vibrant office suppliers in, as in cleaning materials. There's not any particular reason for that. I would have thought it would better go to a company that specializes in cleaning materials. Probably cheaper to, I would have thought.
I think they do, I think that's the country that, was the, was some of it.
Yeah. Exactly, yeah, but that's the next phase of it, we are then, if you try and, sometimes you, yes, we'll take.
So, yeah, one last thing, I was thinking, I asked my member company as well. Um, a couple of articles from here, and I'd love to be shocked, obviously, I, for example, some electric equipment from Hughes Electrical. And we've got my house in town, obviously, one to buy.
Yeah.
You weren't shocked, were you?
Um, I think, I don't think about pricing, um, it could be that Hughes, you know, they had a sale or whatever. Do you believe that when we bought those televisions, they were a sale?
So maybe in future, we can perhaps look at that locally, is it that?
Can, can I just come in now and ask that question? The council were reimbursed for those tellys, so it was actually the council bought them. They, they were purchased through a donation, so the money came in as a donation. And that is the tellys were, were bought and gifted to the Vodafone building. So, I'm just saying like, that, oh, yeah, not the Vodafone building, the arch. So they were gifted to the youth club, so it wasn't technically a council purchase.
All right, moving on to item A, this, sorry, sorry, pardon.
Um, again, uh, another thing I, I've noticed is that we seem to purchase almost all, if not all, the food. We purchase for the community cafe and the send. Um, since last month, it was a couple, something, uh, just over nine hundred pounds worth of food. Again, would it not be better to use a health sale such as Thomas Reevy's or Booker's or somebody? Would it not be cheaper than going to the supermarket? And not the treatment system?
Sometimes, yes, sometimes, no, it just depends. Depends what you're after.
Right, so we do use.
We, we don't, I don't have any time with Macro or Thomas Reevy.
Can I come in there as well, to do the check? Um, some of the stuff is actually bought from Macro and there will be invoices in the accounts. And what's cheaper at Macro will be purchased at Macro and what's cheaper in supermarkets, probably just in the supermarkets.
The chambers are always welcome, so please, the council, I don't want to pay the kind result, I do the shopping, you're welcome to.
All the cookies, I've been off the last two Sundays and also I'm forgetting this Sunday. So, um, if anyone wants to come and pitch in, like always, all members are welcome. I actually think it was four men that done the dinner this week, so there was all, um, two, one councillor and three volunteers. No, two councillors and two volunteers.
Okay, councillors report, some late. Anybody got anything to, uh, to councillor's stage?
I attended the, um, Royal British Legion event, um, to commemorate our fourth week, um, it's twentieth of June. Queen Square was, um, really well attended and, um, well supported. Um, just much say thank you to the chairman, secretary, um, for that, um, that was really good. And we're hoping the community, you know, good, good was to keep that, you know.
Anybody else?
So from a district perspective, oh, um, this went back to your charity, yeah? Um, from a district perspective, I've, um, I attended the, um, opening of the 3G pitch in Fethford and President's Day, which actually was really inspiring to see how they run their spec, sends a day, um, in Fethford. And how the 3G pitch may well look when it hopefully breaks ground here early in the spring. Um, which is a much needed facility once the, um, old sports venue is refurbished and stuff. Hopefully that will bring some more in. And I know, I believe the football club have been given priority booking there along with Morley Football Club and, and other groups, so hopefully that's gonna be something that's good for the district. I've also had my regular monthly, um, catch up with the licensing team. And it's probably just as well to take this opportunity to try and explain, because there is a very grave misconception in the community that all we discuss is public houses, which is completely nothing that we're there to discuss unless there's a problem and it's brought to committee. And then three members are all in to committee to discuss that public house or taxi driver or whatever the problem is. And if that was an Attleborough business, it would never come to an Attleborough ward member. But this month, the team have been working really hard and they're now gonna start the work on, um, our statement of licensing policy, which is a requirement from central government that that's produced every five years. And that's got to be in January. So the team are now gonna get, get their teeth in the sand and work on that. On the eighteenth of June, I attended the launch of Fethford's CAP, which is a community area partnership scheme that they run. That'll be looking at, um, and now launching it, it'll be looking at on-street drinking and antisocial behaviour. It'll be teamed up with their schools and other organisations and, uh, same for the neighbourhood organs as well. Um, and that was actually really interesting on how they're gonna launch that, and I think Deirham is the next market to have that. It could well be something that expands to the whole of the district. Um, they've been liaising with garages within the district regarding any garages' interest to help service taxis for the council, and that's come out well, and I think four, four taxi, uh, four garages in the district have come back and expressed an interest in helping us keep all our residents while travelling by hire vehicle safe. And they've also been working on, um, the district's sex establishment policy. And, um, I believe that you've all had that email come through from Breckland for any comments. So that would be really interesting if anyone does have any comments on that policy for them to get back and feed that in. So, so they can all, um, work on producing that document. Um, but I just thought if maybe I gave you a more in-depth, rather than I've had my licensing catch-up, a more in-depth thing on what the team are actually working on, you would all understand better that it isn't just public houses. It's, it's everything in the licensing boundary. So you've just had a major inspection and, um, passed with flying colours. This team also are responsible for that. But, um, yeah, other than that, I've just had some civic events that have been really interesting to go about, county and attend.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay, thank you, moving on. Item nine, possible.
Thank you.
Since twenty twenty three, Breckland Council have appointed a partnerships manager, supported by funding from the town council. I've worked closely with the postholder in the development and delivery of a range of initiatives aligned with the neighbour plan and future Breckland programme. Over the past year, the postholder has facilitated the installation of new wayfinding signage. Football counters which now serve as valuable assets in supporting towns' editor, development and tourism. She has played a leading role in progressing the signal box project in collaboration with the Atterborough Heritage Group with the town council. Currently considering the possibility of taking on a lease from Network Ground. She is also overseeing the wider renovation of the Atterborough train station buildings, with funding being sought to establish an innovation hub. That will provide workspace and support for small and vegan enterprises, startups and entrepreneurs, encouraging economic growth within the town. The splash pad project is presently in the design and survey phase. Full funding must be secured prior to commencement or procurement. A consultation led by the postholder indicates a strong community support, with ninety-one percent of respondents supporting the concept. Following an initial presentation to the town council, the postholder has engaged with an organisation to advance proposals for paddle courts within the town. An assessment of potential new bus shelter locations has also been completed by the postholder to inform a forthcoming town council application to the Bus Service Improvement Plan, which is, short, short, matter, B C. Funding opportunities continue to be actively pursued to support these and other forthcoming, forthcoming projects. The postholder drafted transfer letters to allocate forty point five thousand pounds of market towns initiative funding from Breckland. To the town council for the arch's rent over a three-year period, and secured an additional two thousand pounds to facilitate. Facilitate the provision of a disabled access toilet. In addition to project delivery, the postholder facilitates the Atterborough Development Partnership Board, which convenes representatives from town, district and county councils. Along with Hensington and Tarleton Land, focusing on the sustainable urban suspension, extension. She also contributes to the neighbour plan steering group. Improving access to banking services remains a priority. The postholder has been instrumental in coordinating a multi-agency effort to encourage a link to establish a local banking hub. Despite clear community need, decision-makers have determined that additional banking facilities are not required at this time sadly. As a result, will continue to work collaboratively to deliver positive outcomes for Atterborough. Updates on town council assets, work is still being run to the Vono building. Uh, currently we're having a new shower, re-tiling and flooring of the home changing room. Um, and there is also now a new DDA compliant external doors which have been fitted. Uh, there has been a new CCTV system and a Trudo alarm installed for better security. Work is beginning to transform the grand floor front room at the town hall into a reception office space. The three remaining notice boards are now in place again, with the recreation ground and the cemetery. Works are being sought for improvements to the Queen's Road cemetery in a row of ways. This will be costly and may have to be phased. A tree safety survey has been carried out on all open spaces with mature trees and works to any high to medium risk trees will be followed up in the coming weeks. The grounds team are continuing to monitor and water the new community orchard at Blackform and Open Space. The public toilet doors continue to remain locked. We are, we, I've, I've actually wrote this last week, but parts have arrived, and I will amend that. Um, they have actually started work on trying to get the toilets up and running. Um, the electrician is working on the right-hand door. He's halfway through that particular job, but he envisages that hopefully the two toilets will be in action at the end of next week. Um, we have got a disability access portal in place, and I've also now ordered a single one. Um, and kindly the Griffin Hotel has offered use of their toilets, and any visitors square are still welcome to use the town hall in opening hours. The works to repair the vandalised drain at the day is expected to take place on the sixteenth of July. Works have begun to get the new play area in Lowndes Road open space. They have, um, recommenced the work now, so we're told by the contractor that all being well, the work should be completed by the twenty fifth of July. And then there is some information on the opening hours of the arch, and I will endeavour to make sure that that's put on our website now that those groups have got going. So it's expected that moves to come, the old Tuesday clubs returning at the venue, and there is a new creative. Um, it's like an art group for special needs and disability children. Um, that will be taking place on Saturday morning, um, between ten and twelve. Um, and that will be starting around about mid August.
Okay, thank you, Sharon.
So if you'd just ask a couple of questions on the class report. Sharon, on the class report, um, around the arch and the work that the benching foundation are doing there, you mentioned the opening times. When we commissioned the benching foundation, we asked them. We asked them if they would stay open till nine o'clock, not eight o'clock, because our young adults in the town actually don't have. Anywhere really to go. And I think the vision from the district board members when we asked the town council to come in with us on this project. Was that it would facilitate, as well as the send children, because there is literally nothing in our world for them. But it would take our young adults off the street and give them somewhere to go. And if that, well, you see kids up and down High Street, sometimes all night, sometimes till come ten, eleven, twelve o'clock at night. It, I know we wouldn't ever have a venue open till that night, but later than eight o'clock, I don't see any fourteen, fifteen, sixteen year olds that would want to. Come in, sit on the sofa, get a can of pot out of the fridge or make a hot drink, going home at eight o'clock at night, and it just really concerns me. That we, we did ask them to look at that, we have not come back with, to us with that amendment. Um, it's great that Debbie's now engaging with about the Tuesday club, that was a great loss when the Methodist church shut that down. So the fact that she is now looking at coming back in on a Tuesday and using that facility is, is amazing, thank you. And, um. My other one was, was on the, the toilets. We did get some criticism Thursday for the state of the toilets. Um, and I, I know that isn't really, I know they have responsibility, the people that we rent them off to keep them and clean as, as well as, as we do. But, um, thank you for getting it removed and collected and a new one put back in quickly, because it was absolutely quite vile. And some of my Labour colleagues from Deirham visiting, and I think were absolutely shocked at how disgusting that it's been treach. So, um, thank you for acting swiftly on that. And, um, it's great that finally we're getting somewhere, but if we could also have an update on how we're getting on with the company that failed to repair the toilets and. Would, would be great if we could have that for next month. Yeah, thank you.
Can I just add one?
Yeah, Sharon.
Um, is, when the conference was put out, was there any retention on these with the company of the doors?
No, don't be mistaken.
It was a very complicated complex, all of all of it.
Yeah, it all before, quite complex, yes.
We basically specified in words once of all, we didn't name.
They acknowledged, they did acknowledge, but they did ignore it, so. And we are going to take legal action against them.
Form a law, um, in the foot conference out, and.
It's all the same.
Yes, yeah, that's, that's the issue. If, if it wasn't any money, that would be with the people who used the, probably didn't visit, it wasn't in money.
I don't do that all at once, once we've got to, except for that.
That's my report, please, get the toilet, I'm going to do it.
You mentioned that paddle presentation, which was presented to us in January, I think, of this year, um, which is really giving you the opportunity. Um, could you just elaborate, um, I think it was, was it the proposal to the two courts when they came in January, is it two still?
I think so.
And is that still at the cost of thirty six thousand pounds per court?
Um.
That was what it quoted.
Yeah, I, I think that as time goes by, inevitably rise. Um, yeah.
I just want to, if we remember the first option, although, I think there's a lot higher, forty six thousand, that's a car score.
Yeah. I, I think the main priority at the moment is to find a site before we start looking at the detailing, because unless you know the size of the site, particularly land. Yeah, those who can rule out land, there is a site in mind, but that's a question you can sense still at the moment, so I can't really say. But that is progressing quite further, is all I can say.
Sorry, we still have another session, Sharon, I'm going to go on the spot. You, um, you mentioned the splash pad, and, um. In your list of what Megan's been working on as our project manager or whatever it is. We actually have a, um, meeting with Megan on Thursday, I believe she's come back and confirmed. As warned members, because obviously we will be contributing quite a large financial sum to that. Has she updated you that the, the costings have been exaggerated quite a lot because of rising prices? So I think we're just going to have this meeting to try and decide. I was just wondering if she had extended an invitation to the council for a representative.
I don't think she has come in, I, I will allow that, I will say.
Yeah, if you don't mind, just check in. Um, if not, she also had availability for Friday here, rather than Thursday at Elizabeth House.
Okay.
So, um, just to like search those figures about and have a look at options.
Yeah.
I think, and then she'll come and do a presentation to the full council.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item ten, like, I'm sorry.
Good, I do apologize.
That's right.
The, this Atterborough project manager from Breckland Council, this one July, uh, is costing us eighteen thousand three hundred and three pounds. Is that a one-off payment, or is that a monthly payment?
One, one off for the whole year.
No, it's annual payment.
It's annual.
Right, okay.
Which is twenty five hundred pounds.
And is it, is it cost effective?
Highly. Not very cost effective, thank you.
Yes.
Item ten, late for respondents from the upcoming full council meeting, that should read on the fourth of August twenty twenty five.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, uh, no, I.
It would be a present. Item eleven, proposals for a city town sports networking event. That's going to be organised by John Dennis from the Boxing Club. And we're going to collaborate with him, I believe, to organise that on the, on the recreation ground.
Yeah, so, yeah, if you don't mind, Andy. Um, so I spoke with John, I think it was possibly last week, if not the week before. Um, and this is stuff in the headboard, that he was eager to, um, have like an active role and facilitate it as long as the town council supported. Um, and the idea that he presented was a sports caf where all of our local sporting groups could showcase themselves, what they had to offer. And to get, you know, new members undertaking in the sport, uh, the activity, or, you know, to recruit new volunteers or coaches or such like to, to help and assist. Um, I did do a preliminary piece of work, um, that I gave to Sharon, just because I thought it would be probably helpful for this, helpful, um, in terms of, you know. Excitations, yes, things concerned going forward, and also to add to our business directory online. Um, of a range of different sporting groups, um, that the town has to offer. Uh, until I started looking up, I didn't actually realise how extensive actually the knowledge is. Um, but did incorporate the kind of catchment and surrounding area as well. And so, um, there is a bit of a base there, like a foundation of, you know, groups that could be invited, and I do think actually. Um, it should, they will take up the offer, and it could be a really spectacular event. Um, obviously, John from Boxing Club, uh, it was his idea, he's in favour, it has been muted with representatives of the football club. Uh, they've already expressed an interest in wanting to attend, and so have the athletics academy. So, so far, it seems to have been really well perceived, which is why the council, um, are happy for the land to be used.
It's something to discuss, that the neighbourhood council, they have a, for a moment, yeah, I think we should, should, uh, sort of say so. How's it saying?
I, I was just going to ask, and I, I do know you have a bit extensive working to put in a record together, but did you include the, um, basketball club that play out from the high school? Because I, I sometimes think there's clubs that aren't seen out and about in the town that, that get missed. But I think, yeah, it should be nice, it'd be like a big old fashioned sports day on, on the, on the road, it should be good.
Anyone else have any comments?
Just go a minute, isn't that fine there?
No, okay, three, two, three, four, five, six.
Probably at the moment, it's just to sort of introduce it.
Well, any, any other on timescales?
Not at the moment, but, but hopefully by the end of the.
Well, John, John said it will be September, probably the end of the summer.
Yeah, okay, I'm sure.
Um, but if we have to act quite quickly.
Yeah, yeah, it's good.
So on, on that basis, can we just, so that it's been ticked off, can we just, can I make a proposal, the town council is supportive and that the land. Um, at the recreation ground can be used, um, to facilitate this above place.
One second now. Always in favour of the council, I think it's a statement, yeah.
I think John, too, I'm sure, that to me. Uh, council, that's.
Can we? Are you in favour?
Yeah.
Thank you. Item twelve, proposals to bring the events working group into the spaces committee for the election resolution. Did you write on that, or speak to yourself?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, um, it's just one less meeting, really, I don't know how we feel about that.
Do we got any ones?
What the United say is, is that on the basis that the majority of the events are likely to take place on the open spaces. It's essential to run them together.
That's, that's, that's.
Uh, yeah, I just think it'd probably bring a little bit more like a, a regime to it as well, to make sure that there are these things that were frequently being brought. Says it's a scheduled calendar of those, those meetings, and also we'd probably bring a little bit more transparency to it as well. Um, as the open meetings that are being brought in.
Any objections?
I've just got a question, actually. Um, for example, Ray, what, what is the working group, uh, the events working group and the open spaces committee?
The open spaces committee basically looks at, as, as it suggests, the open spaces are green areas.
Right.
Uh, I think the events working group, do you want to elaborate on that council version?
Um, well, to be fair, the events working group, it kind of existed really, because the last year, there's only been council day, I actually turned up to it. But on the basis of that, it was a, it was a working conditions to, um, discuss and to help organise a collaborative event that town council are organising.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So on that basis, there normally that, actually, last year, myself and council day, I actually turned up and.
Mm-hmm.
Successful, I think, I, maybe do, as you say.
Yeah, okay, you're the poser.
I'm poser, yes.
Yeah, I'm second, I'm the council guy.
Thank you.
Okay, always in favour? Any, yeah, okay, thank you.
Sharon, we will just need to review the terms of reference, not the places we have yet.
Okay, item thirteen, feedback from the sensational day on fourteen of June. I think that was your, um.
Well, I, um. I feel like there's been mixed feedback, some has been very good, some has been, I wouldn't say bad, but constructive certainly. Um, I think really, I just wanted to put the feelings out, to see whether or not it was something that the council wanted to carry forward as an annual end. At their grouply first attempt, there's always going to be, you know, a bit of like teething problems. And I think on the whole, the day was quite successful, and there's certainly things that have been done to make it better. Uh, maybe more efficient, maybe you have a shorter day, or towards length, some of the support stores have dipped out, and a few of them left maybe about five o'clock. And times like seven hours probably is like a very long time. Um, but at this point, I think it was just really to gauge whether or not it's something that the town council were committed with once we made. Because obviously people do want to do it and they want it better. Um, the more time to make that happen, um, the more effectively we do. So it was just really to get a steer from the councils to work on something that they would be repeating.
Any early comments? Any in favour or against? Does it not?
I would say we stick with it and we do it next year. Or even if we end up in two or more, I'd say it.
Does it say that?
Can I say if we give it enough, go give it enough, go next year and then we, rather than saying yes at this point, it will be an annual event because if it's a flop again. Or it doesn't work, not that it was a flop, that was a portrait of words, but if like we're reaching it next year to see if it changes. Um. Then we can put it on a rolling annual thing at that point, but I think to say yes to a annual event at this stage.
I think, um, I think as well, I may, um, I was just at council, Adele, before the, before the end. Me inside that I attended the president's day with council tailor. And, um, that was, you know, predominantly a sporting event aimed at children with additional needs. Um, but they did have some fun activities as well, like the football and go kart rings where they'd obviously go. The track was in play at all and then they would have the go karts and other indoor sports like golf and, uh, basketball and football as well. Uh, so I know after a tap that the club did kind of bring their goals out for the kids to have a pick around. Um, but there is some things that we could probably bring in. Um, obviously all of that would have to be budget and capital for. And it would probably make it a little bit more diverse for a wider range of age groups. And so I think that was kind of one of, one of the most commonly repeated, um, feedbacks. And also, um, I did know on the income, there was the five hundred pounds from Breckland percent. That was paid into, uh, Breckland and then redirected to the town council. But actually, I think it's worth noting that the president of president's day, um, and the sporting club actually made that five hundred pound cash donation to the town council. In the spirit that they thought what we were doing and what we're trying to achieve was quite a phenomenal thing. So, um, I think those pieces are actually extending that, so we could do that with them, Sharon.
So, and last, last point, um, yeah, maybe we should have acknowledged that that came in as a cash donation was a very, very, that's one of that. Um, it did actually bring one of the officers of Breckland out to visit a bank, which hasn't been done for a very long time apparently, like to actually pay cash in. Um, but I think it was also worthy to note that there were bouncy castles that should have been on the rec that day. And, um, obviously for healthy safety reasons, the company supplying those bouncy castles felt that the wind was, was too strong. But the mother actually breached safety guidelines on using bouncy castles. So I think if they'd have been there, that would have given other kids other things to do, which so that was quite a shame. And I do know like the fare that theirs up and took it down, up and took it down as the, the wind changed. But, um, a president's day, that was mainly their main, their main team. They had about ten bouncy castles. And they were in full use literally the three hours that I was there. Um, I was only actually supposed to attend for an hour, but enjoyed it so much I stayed for three. But, um, yeah, I think it's, it's always a good thing to see children that don't always strive in other environments to actually have something to do. So I would support the still and support these.
Okay. Always in favour? Okay, thank you. Yeah. Well, item fourteen, scouts lease update.
I've chased it, but I haven't had a head back from this yet.
Okay, thank you. Item fifteen, Breckland car park proposal. Given the situation. Waiting for feedback from Breckland. We'll report that as soon as possible.
Can I ask questions please?
Sure.
Obviously, I did attend the last meeting, but it, it was again waiting for feedback and things like that. So is it that, um, the district council are trying to unload it on the town council or the town council are requesting. The taking ownership of these car parks? How's it, how's it working? Because I have a significant concern if it comes to the town council.
On what basis?
Well, I mean, if it comes to the town council, you've then got a financial burden, you've got maintenance upkeep. Um, which potentially could lead to the charging for the car park. If it's coming from the district council, if it comes with a community sum as with sort of a developer puts open space in or something like that. To get the council to take it, then you have a community sum for a certain amount of years. Because it can only be a diminishing, sort of, not necessarily diminishing a- asset, but a cost burden over time. It will need servicing, it will need remarking, et cetera. So is it just a burden that's going to the council?
Well, that, I, I take it more what you're saying, that, that said, it has, has any reason to be resurfaced and re.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So the likelihood is that that, that cost is gonna be waiting in the future. But what, what was the, I can't remember the reason why.
Andy, would you like me to give some insight on council attainment? And I won't complain, but I am allowed to participate in discussion, so I can probably try and address some of council midalbert's problems. And I can also go back if council would like me to and try and gee up the officers that are doing this to give you a little bit of a response. Um, if you would like their assistance.
It, it's been proactively worked on, so I had, um, obviously a really consulting effort. Um, and car parks were very, very briefly touched upon. Um, and it is just a case of, you know, these things, especially a freehold option, do take time. So if we've progressed with a leasehold option, that could have been a little tackled quite nicely, quite quickly. Um, but as the town councils, and it's not just us, it's, you know, actually the, most of the market towns have requested, requested a freehold option. On the basis that they think it'd better safeguard that asset for their community. Um, so that was the town council asking for that, so it was offered a lease, but the town council has asked for a freehold. And that is because of local government reorganisation. Um, if it doesn't come down to the town council, if the town council then don't have that control on that asset, chances are it's gonna go up. And it will probably have national charging rather than, you know, if we did have a parking charge to cover the costs that you've outlined. Where it's a modest fee that reflects, you know, what our community's needs are, that's gonna be far better for the town. Than if you're paying city prices because it's a blanket that's for an hour.
I totally understand that, you just forget to understand.
No, 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 I completely understand the concern. And I think, you know, ev- everyone around the table, I mean, I think we must be pretty collectively, you know, it was quite unanimous. Had the concern that if it was, if not come down to us, what the implications would be if there was an astronomical parking charge. And how that would affect the high street. So really, it's just trying to prevent that from happening. And have it so that actually it could be if a charge was introduced to cover its costs, so it wasn't so bad, you're not allowed to make a profit. As a town council on, on a charging car park, so you're not allowed to even turn a profit. It's just, it's got a break even with the maintenance and, and, and the costs associated.
Yeah, the warrant to go round the chappals too.
But, but you're not allowed to make a profit on that, so it would just be a, a modest fee that would cover the costs. So that it weren't to the detriment of the taxpayer or, you know, our precept. But without actually having that, that risk that if it went up to another authority that we were gonna be facing where. Chances are that there would be charging for sure and that it would not reflect our values means, it would probably reflect, um, the unitary's needs.
Which I will just add, I attended a service in Norwich only two, three weeks ago. And I got charged nine pound after three hours at that, at that service in, in. So the fear, and, and it, it's, it's gonna come, when, when unitary comes and it will come, the town is gonna see increases in numerous things. Our council tax a hundred percent is gonna in- increase quite dramatically because they're assuming the average will be taken to whatever merge we are. So if it's one merge for the whole of Norfolk, one unitary, the average for the whole of the county will probably be taken and that's what ours will go up to. And being the lowest in the county, Atalborough, the Breckland district will see the biggest increases on whatever option there is, whether it's. Two unitaries or three unitaries. I think Breckland along with five other districts in Norfolk are pushing for a three unitary council. So we would potentially merge with West Norfolk. That will see the lowest increase, although it's gonna increase, but that would be the lowest if we got that option. And, um, and I still think that that's somewhere muted about a thirty percent increase in our council tax if we get that three unitaries. So, and that's just on the figures that they've been trying to pull in from other councils, what they pay or what they collect. But that would be the same probably with car parking, there will be a, a district account.
I just wanted some background, so I thank you both.
But, um, but I can always ask when we're there Thursday if we've got any further, I know you've just said you've had enough today tonight.
Well, in this scenario, a car park gets sold off to a private organisation, an N C P or something like that. Skies in the middle on costs and then they might even sell it off and develop it.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, so we got control of that.
Yeah, maybe just to get some background.
It's also needs careful consideration. These are figures to stack up, so that was the, that was the thinking. Yeah. Okay. Item sixteen, proposals to revise the social media policy for consideration.
Oh, that's the.
Street wardens.
Okay, sorry. Okay, consideration for safety, street wardens, you have a problem. Apologise.
So, um, we've got the letter, yeah. So it's. Where the council is interested in having safe street. I, I personally don't know too much about it, I don't think you, do you want me to still? So, um, basically this was something that was, um, tried and tested in Deptford. Um, and, I mean, obviously I'm not gonna pretend that this is my area of expertise. Uh, I think it actually falls of Tristan's portfolio, um, so that's a show that he can be here. But basically, um, it's been tried and tested in Deptford, um, because it's been proven to be so successful. Um, which I don't know if the, the level has actually got any of the stats. Um, no, but there, there has been some feedback, um, from a consultation, um, on the, on the. On the one in Deptford, I'm sure, um, although don't quote me on it, the, the feedback was like something like, like, so positive. Um, so off of its success, they're proposing to roll it out across all five of the market towns. Um, I had noticed that obviously recently we've had some feedback, um, about C C T V in the town. Um, and although obviously that might not be something that's, you know, feasible in all areas. Because obviously, you know, going really attaching it to the cost implications, obviously having town council assets to, for it to, to feed into. Of course having to get third party approval is, um, I do wonder if something like this, like this presence would actually mitigate some of that demand that we've seen. Uh, especially in terms of antisocial behaviour. Um, obviously I, I'll be abstaining, I do for markets, obviously a decision for the council to make. Uh, but I think it's a part funded fifty fifty, um, between the town and the district and so as a partnership. And as I say, this is something that they're controlling our district wide.
Just a question.
I also suggest could be, um, probably adjourned on to next agenda, item Sharon, that you perhaps get some more information on how it'll benefit us, it's quite vague at the moment. Um, particularly around like examples on how it's benefited Deptford, examples on feedback on positivity, um, exact roles and responsibility of. The role on that.
Yeah.
And just examples, right, right, good theory?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sharon, it, it might also just be wise, be right who either Tristan's portfolio or, or one of the leadership officers.
Yeah.
To actually tend, so if members have any questions, they could take those questions. Um, but I'd maybe, maybe see what kind of timeframe they, they want in the decision by, because I know this.
It is really quickly, it's quite quickly, so I was gonna say, if you're gonna ask them to come and do a presentation, do it at G P M F. So it's two weeks' time, not a, another month, because I know our last full council meeting, you know, our, we, we had brought up. That actually none of the market towns had, um, there's another ten of your chairman's chat. Come from me and now.
I'll see you later.
But, um, but yeah, um, they was thinking that it had been slow on the uptake and they were eager to progress it. Because again, we've got quite a short window before there is gonna be no, no district council. So any initiatives that we can get made now will level up, not disappear.
Yes, we're wrong.
Um, the only question I had was, um. I believe at the end of twenty three, there was a nine hundred thousand pound, um, county council or two, district council. To facilitate this. Has that all been used up in Deptford in the time and therefore owed the cost to the council? Or is there some, still some money to contribute towards it?
I, I would have to ask, but I, but I think that was a standalone thing in Deptford. And I think the presence in Deptford has been a lot more than what's been proposed for the other market towns that make a bit, I think, over there. Um, five days, which is not twenty two months.
Just wondered if they'd use, still the funding up already.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm.
We need to change that. Just that.
Just an old, you know, worn up again, P C S Os, well, we have P C S Os in town, we have very little problem. What authority would these people have? Why can't we have P C S Os back again now, talking about bringing back in certain areas? And to me, a P C S O would be much more valuable than a street warden.
I agree.
So just personally, I think. So.
I just have pulled up some bits, so, um, basically as I said, that we've, they've secured safer road, safer streets round five funded. To establish two straight safer neighbourhood warden posts. And they operate in, like, in a eighteen point five hours per week. The impact has been overwhelmingly positive with wardens exceeding the original objectives set out by the fund. A recent survey reinforces this success by not only reductions in crime, but also increased sense of safety within the community. So they have, by continuing to and expanding this initiative, it can further reduce low level crime and antisocial behaviour across the district. Enhance safety and confidence for residents, businesses and visitors. Provide a proactive presence to deter crime before it escalates and strengthen partnerships between local authorities, businesses and law enforcement. Um. Without, if we don't take this offer up, which I'm assuming the money that Breckland are offering to fifty fifty matches. Is coming out of this pot of money and they, they say the scheme will end in March twenty twenty five if there's no, no support or uptake. And that's actually signed by our, um, Norfolk Police Department. Uh, we, well, yeah, it'll run out, that's why it'll be running out, so if we don't complement in March twenty twenty five. Or that's why I think they're asking if we wanna join in and carry on the schemes.
Okay, yeah, that's.
Can I just ask, are we looking at employing a number of street wardens specifically for Atalborough?
Mm-hmm.
Or are they, is it gonna be spread over all market towns?
Two for Atalborough, two for Deirham, two for Deptford, so our contribution will specifically fund to.
Just two.
For Atalborough.
So two for you. And they won't go anywhere other than in that?
No, Atalborough for eighteen point five hours of the week if you.
Is that age or?
Age. But they do normally work in pairs, the ones in Deptford do. I think on our crime and antisocial behaviour, we're a lot lower than Atalborough and some of the other towns.
So, so some of the things that I would take is public convention with Deptford as a best deal in local areas. Provide physical presence on the streets, on the hospital areas, ensure early engagement in. provide physical presence on the streets, on the hospital areas, ensure early engagement and interventions to prevent antisocial behaviour, that's something that we've experienced some issue with. We currently don't have that PSPO, but if we had, that they would be enforcing that. Public engagement to enable them to feel safe and create a physical presence and feel more safety, help and support to vulnerable persons, reduction in crime and NSB, people within the city who are harmed, increase private place and that reputation of safer and pleasant areas to be in, increased experience of social behaviour, staff close to working with the police, and less urination and vomiting in public areas, which actually we used to have it in the public, but that's based off of it. I will say.
Sorry, we all got the letter from South chap and Alan, which states everything on the year.
Yeah.
So, um, is it enough, is it worth it?
In principle, it's the right way to go, I think, but presumably there's not an argument to have a PCSO instead.
No, and also, I would like to know what training they have, what powers they would have. I'd like a lot more detailed advice.
Yeah, I'm not sure if he has a huge amount of power. Absolutely. Any other comments?
Can I just ask, I mean, perhaps I'm beginning to believe here, but do we have a specific, a particular problem with antisocial behaviour on a scale that is requiring this sort of treatment or? No.
No, not specifically to the council, I suppose, but just generally.
Well, the, the damage that was done at the Dell was a result of antisocial behaviour.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So was the public.
Probably, yeah.
Set of incidents.
They probably told us.
Someone went down the camera of the public area, so that's just had to be repaid at possibly thirty nine pounds.
Inker faces what we're seeing.
Can we not just add more cameras in these places? There's enough power in town to hook a camera up, can't we just have cameras?
Well, that's what Tony said about the third party, would have to have third party approval.
Well, can we look into this? As an, as an option?
I mean, they're, 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 somebody's got to look at it, they're putting it all the time as well.
Only meditatively, no?
Yeah, they're always clear, anyway. Yes, the doctor.
Yeah, one of the one items that was put on was the fact that there was spray painting going on as well, which around the cemetery, and that's not very good then.
No.
So it would be better to have a profile that says just cameras, because cameras get ignored too easily.
But if these walk into one end of the town, well, there's a lot of antisocial behaviour. And then there's the cemetery at the other end of the town, they're going to miss it, aren't they? Whereas if there's a camera constantly.
Maybe should have come this way too.
Yeah.
Well, you could, but again, but there has to be somebody monitoring this.
Absolutely, yeah, yes, without.
Not really. Eighteen hours a week.
That's, that seems a short call to me.
And it seems, you know, eighteen, they're going to, they're going to work night evenings, are they going to work mornings? It really, I've got a lot more detail before it, because eighteen point five hours is nothing in a town.
Nothing at all, sure.
Nothing at all, you know, and, and the damage that's done is usually done in the evenings, either working late, you know. It's not so much, yeah.
Yes, I'd say that.
So, um, obviously someone did mention like stats earlier on what they do. So I have just brought one up, and this was a recent survey of businesses and residents in Deptford. And that was ninety-six percent of businesses see the wardens at least once a week. Fifty-six percent of businesses have seen a reduction in crime with a further eight percent unsure. Ninety percent have seen a reduction in antisocial behaviour. Eighty-six percent say their staff now feel safer at work. Ninety-three percent of residents believe that the wardens are protecting Deptford and the PCSPO, PSPO from antisocial behaviour in general. Ninety-four percent of residents agree or strongly agree that they feel safer in the town since their induction. And percentage of residents agree the safer street wardens are having a positive impact on the following issues. Eighty-three percent on substance misuse, including drugs and alcohol. Eighty-five percent crime, seventy-three percent public urination, and eighty-nine percent, uh, eighty-three percent of youth causing a nuisance. So, um.
Do you know what, what, I don't know what it is.
No, it, it didn't say that. But I think it's always, it's that age-old thing, we, we used to feel safer when there was a body on the street.
Yeah, yeah.
These work with the residents, and I think we do need to be mindful that although there are CCTV cameras in the town that are monitored via King's Lynn through Breckland, again, we've got change coming, Breckland is not going to be there, don't rely on those cameras staying. I, I, I'm just, there's something we all take for granted, but when we merge and we level up, there will be losses.
Does it work to you?
Uh, I was just going to get to my proposal, but it's, it's so vague. I know I appreciate it, time is so, um, short. However, I personally don't have enough information to say this. Uh, the same as coming out, obviously, what can, what can they do if they do not, someone?
And that, and that's the issue, right?
What, what can they do, what's their power?
Just going back to the council tables and numbers, is that the percentage of residents or the percentage of residents asked?
Survey, it, it's a recent survey, so that will be the results of that survey. The longer you're sat at this table, Jacob, you will know, you can survey residents and you can send it out for weeks and you'll probably only get eight or twenty that come back with an answer. So I can't give you those figures, I can ask for those figures and I can send them to you.
You can.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Can I please, um, ask the new councillor and options for president to defer?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, can, can, shall we second that? Shall we second, oh, what in favour of the burn?
To the GPNF in two weeks if you're going to have to.
Can we get some more information in the next meeting time? Thanks for that, it was his fault. Public participation, yes. I'm going to say to me, oh. Okay, start off on the, on my right, please.
Okay, just wanted to say as a matter of record that it wasn't a very good answer from the council, Alan. And I don't accept that as, as his answer. And also that, um, he promised to deliver something, you know, as part of a campaign. And yet he said that he vilified a member of the ethnic minority because they promised something that they could deliver.
Marcia, I think your question is political. I think you were the opponent in this election, I appreciate that you did not get elected.
I'm just saying, I'll say how you're going to deliver something that you ha, that you promised.
I've sat here, this is my first meeting, come back to me in six months.
Well, I'll come back and ask later.
Okay, one second.
It all fails, he had his campaign, he promised something that he can't wait for chief, obviously it's not fair, so we.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, well, there's a public participation, so. Just listen to the back.
I mean, councillor Allen, to be, to be honest, didn't do a lot of campaigning because he was handed the seat. Um, therefore, I can't understand what, so who's going to be referring to when she said he promised, made promises in his campaign, because his campaign is so short, it is almost non-existent.
Yes, without.
For this, for the new councillors, this period of time is for the public to ask questions, not for us to ask questions. It's for the public, it's the only opportunity they get.
I'm, I'm, I'd stop the clock, that's okay.
Thank you.
If, if there's a direct question to most specific councillor, I'll obviously deal with that, but it's not too dangerous for councillors. Next, please, at the back.
Um, who's responsible for the removal of abandoned bikes in the town? And what period of time constitutes an abandoned bike? And while it was a bike with a billboard, allowed to remain chained to the railings for nearly two months?
It's not our responsibility, but the question, question was asked and then it has been answered.
This was asked by Theresa, who did your report to?
Norfolk County Council.
Yeah, councillor Tyrell, I was saying. All that. It's, that, that piece of land is Tyrell's, yeah, yeah. Yes, please, sir.
Um, first of all, there's been talk during this election campaign of, um, not letting Attenborough Town Council get political. We've had a situation this evening where we've had two district councillors spend an inordinate amount of time talking about issues that Breckland are trying to push through. Um, talking about the possible dismantling of the current system, talking about what's going to happen when the system is dismantled. I think this is Attenborough Town Council's meeting, not a meeting for Breckland District Council. Secondly, the, the thing you were just talking about, this, um, warden thing, was the figure ten thousand? Yeah, was it ten thousand? Well, are you aware that within your financial, um, regulations and procurement policy, it clearly states that any expenditure over ten thousand must go before full council? So therefore, GP and finance don't have the authority to pass this.
That's it.
Okay, my third point is the minutes. Now, the clerk said, I can't remember, you used a phrase that, how you describe what's in the minutes. Um, in previous months, under public participation, you have listed a question with a response. Sometimes you can't answer it on the night and you might just say, we'll get back to you. So you've got what the, what the person said and what the response was. This month, you, there was nothing, there was just words, like it was mobile phone. No detail about what, what the member of the public asked. Once again, you didn't list the figure for the mobile phones. But can you see there's no consistency? And within those minutes, you, once again, like you did last August, referred to me as an ex-councillor. The fact that there were three ex-mayors that spoke that night, there were two ex-councillors, but for some reason, you have to refer to me as an ex-councillor. In fact, there's, sorry, there's another lady here who comes to all the meetings who's an ex-councillor. Now, I'm proud that I'm an ex-councillor, but you don't have to keep putting that. And you actually gave me a paragraph which you thought was more important than reporting the public participation. When the members of the public were raising issues, you thought that was more important to put a paragraph in about what I said, rather than the, the valued questions that were raised by the members of the public. My last point is the website, I think it was alluded to earlier on, it's very difficult to access your papers. About the beginning of this year, you stopped putting them under meeting papers and you asked people to go to a link on the agenda. And a lot of people can't do that, or they, I've been getting messages saying, where are the papers? And I'm saying, they're there, you just need to go. I don't know why you've done that, but it would really help from a transparency point of view if you went back to actually putting the papers under meeting papers so that people can actually access them without panicking, because you know what's happening? People think you're trying to hide something and you're not, because the papers are there, but they can't find them. And this week, you didn't put up all the papers because you say you've got staffing issues. And the finance papers were in a zip file, and most people don't know how to open a zip file, so.
We're action now.
Yeah, just, it's just to keep, you know, I know you're trying, but just to.
Yeah, we're action now.
The, the only trouble with the scan, when we scan them, is when you need to then look back and you're looking for a subject, you literally have to scan through sometimes about fifty-nine pages to find what you're looking for. Whereas if you have individual documents with titles, it's just easier to look back because you can home in on what you're looking for straight away.
But that's fine, but put them under meeting papers, do you see what I mean, rather than the link?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Do you see what I mean? Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sue, please.
Um, yeah, no, this is just, um, on behalf of At Care, I was asked to contact Sharon um, about the arch and the opening hours and all things, that's why I waited till the end to see what has come out of it. There's an At Care meeting next week, could I possibly ask you to, to either send me what you've got when you know about opening hours and who's going to be doing it, so that I could report it back to At Care? Or if you, if you haven't got anything, let me know and I'll report that back to At Care as well.
Yeah, we'll do it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yes, brother, bye, please.
Yeah, this is a quick one, the alleyway can lay on eighty hundred floors, that's an absolute disgrace. As Brambles Park, a government hot neighbour, she's eighty seven years old, with a blood clot on the stick, a trot walk through there. Ain't shouting over, I'm telling you, eh? Don't you shout.
Yeah, yeah.
And also the pavement through there, which is terrible, and also a lot of grass.
Okay, that's how highways are shown, if the government will get us them.
I, I actually think some of the ones about Harvard Place on highways.
Oh, there's one, oh, there has, we checked yesterday.
Well, I think that one, I think at least is, um, on the dock, because the one that comes from Harvard Cliffs. So Eden Lane, yeah, I go in the past, it was a good.
Right, okay.
It's not a town council, so I'll take it from the houses.
Go on, we'll look into it anyway.
Yes, please.
I was, I was, just for a couple of things, I think they've all been discussed, I was pleased the council in Littlebrook has, at least someone's got some concerns about Breckland's taking over the car parks. And I estimate I looked at the swap with Deptford, um, meeting, and suggested, there's nothing on there. So I don't, all these other Breckland councils, I can't really see where they're discussing that. So I am pleased that we won't have to ask that sort of question and, and talk about community sounds the same sort of language as I'd use. But also with, I just want to clarify as well, with these, with these safer street wardens, okay, which you mentioned, so has that decision now been deferred to a subcommittee or a committee? Is that what you've agreed to, I?
It is for, to expel it, but.
So it's to see if I can't agree at, at the, at the.
Next, maybe we have to make my nations to rat, be ratified by full council.
So, so is it going to be brought to the next council, full council meeting?
Well, it will have to be, if that's the case, but, but, you know.
I was asking, right?
We're short of time.
Unless you do an extraordinary meeting.
Oh, well, I do, that's the case, yeah, yeah. But it, it's going to the GPNF in the first instance to, to be ratified, really pleased to be able to have a meeting.
You can't, you can't do that, they can't, anything over ten thousand has to go before full council. That's in your financial regs.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm going to do, in, in EGM then, because you can't wait until the next council meeting, that. And that's it, the workaround we're trying to find.
Well, you're only need seven days, don't you, can do an EGM?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, please, that, that.
Um, as Attleborough is a growing town, are the amount of town councils we have proportionate?
Good question. Yeah, yeah.
Is that something that?
We'll look into that.
Because it's such a growing town, it's growing, growing even more over the next five, ten years.
Yeah, certainly, nothing will change until the next.
Yeah, it's just something I just thought of thinking about when the voting was going on.
I think when you get the houses, four thousand pounds, which would be in a very decades. As it grows, they might want to.
I've got my thoughts on it, right, I think, yes, please.
Yeah, thank you, Peter Neale again. Um, I'd like to follow on from what Mr Kay said a little while ago about the, uh, the, what some of the walkways and what state they're in. And yes, I know it's highways or Norfolk County Council, something like that, but we have, I believe, if I'm correct, we have the first level of management for this town sitting around this table. Can something come from the, uh, from the town office about the state of the grass areas? I don't mean where the children play particularly, but all the verges to the estates, the, the grasses that are growing up along the curbs, on the roadside, absolutely everywhere. Fairfield's estate, I mean, we, we have a councillor sitting around the table here now, he might say that I'm wrong. Uh, but Fairfield's estate is absolutely dreadful. I mean, there's grass, the grass that's cut, hasn't been cut since May, you know, all the ears of grasses. Bloody awful excuse me for, for, for animals, you know, the dogs are getting them down their ears and I've spoken to the vets about that, and it's continual, not just from Attleborough, from other areas as well. But my, my concern is, is Attleborough, my concern is my dog. And I would like to think that the town council, that first level of management, can perhaps, can't do anything perhaps about it, but to shove it, um, along with highways to get some, some action. You know, it's no two, three months since there was calls, it, it also makes the place look untidy. You know, we talk, what I'm talking, we say. You know, we talk, well, we talk and we say what a lovely place Attenborough is to live, because many of us choose to live here, right? But it's looking disgusting. Please, can something be done?
We'll, we'll write to them.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, last one, please, from the doorway.
Just, um, following on with that, I would like to know for a road sweeper and all the drains, like the suctions, I'm not seeing a road sweeper around Attenborough for a very long time. And obviously, there's, obviously potholes coming and a lot of road swept.
Again, again, the whole, I mean.
And it would be a fishery if there was like a road sweeper and like a spray that's killing on the trees. Now, I appreciate it at home, it's not recommended, but we've left all the grass grow up and things. No, 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 so that, could that be looked into as well?
So, yeah. In this sport, I do see a road sweeper, at least on a weekly basis, there is one that does come around. And, and the drains in my part of the town were cleared out a week ago. It does happen, but probably needs to be more often than, than it is, so, okay. Excellent. Okay, I'm afraid I have to move on, we've had that ten minutes, so. Onto the next agenda, onto eighteen. Yes, without a vote.
Yes, earlier today, item six, we voted for a fifth member personnel committee. Obviously, there, I, we have three new members today that will be forth. Therefore, there must be places on some of the subcommittees.
Yeah.
So therefore, at the next meeting, can all the available places for those committees be made known?
Yeah.
So that, um, members can put their name forward for both positions.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have a website that will show the committee's list and that's really on their podcast?
Any else, can I say that?